Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for where you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Yeah.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rohr. Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Getchey.
Here.
It's eleven present.
Any moment of silence, Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Maria Cosambolas Lemay, co-owner and operator with her brother Nicholas of Captain John's Restaurant and Lounge in Couples Square. She was the beloved wife of Brian Lemay and devoted sister of Nicholas Cosambolas. Maria was a graduate of the presentation of Mary Academy and Lowell High School, class of 1977, receiving high honors at both institutions. Maria also studied law at Suffolk University in Boston. Maria was brought up in the restaurant business. Her parents, John and Stella, had established two successful restaurants in the Highlands Couples Square location on Westford Street. First, The Lobster Basket, and later Captain John's, expanding on their prior success. Maria and her brother Nick worked alongside their parents until their death, John in 1983 and Stella, her mother, in 2019. Maria and Nick took over the ownership of the day-to-day operations of Captain John's, continuing their parents' legacy, serving yet another generation of patrons, good spirits, cold beer, and the best fried and baked fresh seafood anywhere. Maria was very generous to our local charities and especially Rosie's Place in Boston. Captain John's, under the leadership of her brother Nick, just completed a very successful first annual toy drive in Maria's honor. Maria is survived by her husband Brian Lemay, her stepdaughter Alyssa Lemay, her brother Nicholas Cosambolas, several cousins and her godchildren. Maria leaves countless friends, patrons, and customers of her beloved Captain John's, whose friendship over the years has felt like family to her. Last but not least, she leaves her cat CJ, her dog CJ Lemay, and her cat Thumper. I would also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. They all will be truly missed. May they rest in peace. Thank you.
Counselor Rook?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Counselor Mercia for doing a moment of silence for Maria. Just to quickly add on to it, you know, a great business run by great people. You know, I was one of those generations that they had served many times and nothing but just, you know, very giving, hardworking people. So, you know, condolences to Nikki and to her family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Yem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say that Maria has a very kind person from the short time that I got to know her when I have an office across the street at 16 Pine Street. She's a very kind-hearted person and we truly, really missed her. Thank you.
Any other comments, any other memorial, uh, memorials? Here and now, I want to thank Counselor Mercia for bringing up a memorial for Maria. I just want to add, in addition to all of what the counsel have said, Captain John's is in our neighborhood and I visit there frequently and what I observe, she had all kinds of patrons, all kinds of customers from all walk of life, from many different countries. It is truly as a neighborhood business, a neighborhood pub, and she treated everybody like family. Maria treated me, treated all her customers like family. I went to the wake this evening. I've heard so many people talk about how Maria was like a mother to all of them. So, you know, it's our heartfelt condolences to her entire family and it's very, very sad for the entire city of Lowell. On top of that, I'd also like to read a moment of silence for another visual late husband of a friend, Patty Corbin Kilty. Beloved husband, father and friend Francis E. Kilty, son-in-law, died peacefully after a long illness on December 6th, 2023, and his Lowell home surrounded by family. He was the devoted husband of Patricia Ann Corbin Kilty, with whom he celebrated their 37th wedding anniversary this past November. Frank, or Frankie, was born in Boston, Massachusetts, to Thomas P. and Carolyn M. Foley Kilty on May 4th, 1952, and was raised in Waltham. He graduated from UMass Boston and the Boston College Graduate School of Social Work, where he earned membership in Alpha Sigma NU. He was deeply committed to his calling to help those in need, and he did so throughout his 31 years career with the Department of Children and Families, DSS. Frank was an avid fan of the Red Sox, Celtics, and Patriots, but most of all, he loved to watch the Little League World Series. His 30 years as an ASA umpire, time playing in the EAA Softball League, and years coaching his daughter's softball team brought him great joy. Frank had strong union values and proudly represented local SEIU 509 as the chief steward for the Malden Office of DCF, forever the union supporter. Frank had an unmatched love of music from his time as a teenager, waiting all night to see his favorite bands, to playing records late into the night for his children. Every occasion had a playlist. His taste knew no bounds and spanned genre and decades. Frank was deeply proud of his Irish heritage and citizenship. He continued his researching, his family genealogy, and enjoyed sharing his findings with others until his last day. Frank always an ear and a kind word for anyone with whom he crossed path. His family lovingly recognized his gift of gab, especially for the children and young adults in his life. Frank is survived by his loving wife Patty and his children Courtney Bridgette Kilty and her partner Daniel Feldman of Boston, Patrick J. Kilty and Con F. Kilty of Lowell, his aunt Theresa Kilty, Valiket of Waltham, sister-in-law Nancy Kilty of Natick, his nieces and nephew Christine Kilty, Billido, Stephen of Melford, Donna Kilty Barker, Rick of Southborough, and Thomas Kilty III of Natick, Shaw Wash and Heather Goulding, and his grandnieces Adriana Rosario, Amanda Rosario, Calley Barker, and Leia Barker, his brothers and sisters-in-law Marie Corbin and Dr. William E. Sweeney of Tewksbury, William and Virginia Corbin of Draken, Agnes Corbin Owens of Melbourne, Florida, and Dorothy Corbin, Manchester, New Hampshire, nieces and nephews William Sweeney of Lynesboro and Edward Ted Sweeney of Long Meadow, Patricia Corbin Andrew Corbin and Kathleen Corbin of Manchester, New Hampshire, Thomas Owens of New Jersey, Master Sergeant Nicholas Owens, USAF of North Carolina, Michael Owens and Catherine Owens, Clausen of Florida, his cousins Noel Brendan Christopher and Angela Ford of County Mayo Island, whom he cherished, and Frank Skaggs, Frank Gallagher, and Bill Condon, his closest friends. As you can hear and see, there's countless names here and many more. Frank lived a blessed life, a full life with many families and friends. Thank you for this moment to honor him and his memory. At this point, please dim the light, Mr. Clerk, for a moment of silence. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to the chamber and everyone who's watching us from home. Today, we had an open house in City Hall, very, very festive. We had visitors from Santa Claus, the elves, many residents and the city came to visit City Hall today. It's a great celebration in the spirit of the holidays. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We now will start the meeting with the mayor's business. We'll start with 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to Accept and Place on File by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott, on favor of the eye opposed by no, the eyes have it. Motion's passed. The next items is the city clerk, the Minutes of Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee, December 5th, city council meeting December 5th for acceptance. If there are no comments or questions, a minute. Motion to Accept and Place on File by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Leahy, on favor of the eye opposed by no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to item 3.2. This is for a vote to cancel the council meeting of 12/26/2023. Any comments or questions by any counselors? Counselor Getchey?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I'm not sure, but in the city council rules, it says a regular meeting may be postponed due to weather or extraordinary circumstances if the city clerk, after polling the membership by telephone or electronically, determines that a majority of the city council's favors a postponement. The mayor or the vice mayor may request that the city clerk poll the members and determination shall be made no later than two hours before the meeting is scheduled to begin. I never get polled on any of these things. And do we know who puts these on there? And shouldn't they be polling us under our own rules? Who are you to the city solicitor?
Sure. I thank counselor. Before I have a word, a comment on that, per the council request, Mr. Solicitor?
Sure. So, I think the two issues would be separate, postponing for a specific reason as opposed to canceling for a different reason. I think the clerk can speak to who puts the vote itself on, but I think those are two separate issues.
Okay. So, the clerk, who puts these on? And?
Um, this one here was put on as customary. Usually a Tuesday between the holidays is customary, taken off by the body. In terms of your council rules, when that first came into place, that had to do with weather. Whether it was going to be canceled, then that's why there's a two-hour thing to make a decision. And that's kind of in concert with everybody in terms of whether at times if the building's going to be open and the polling goes on. This was done as a matter of course. The mayor can vote at any time to cancel a meeting, but this was outside of that rule that you mentioned, Counselor, and it's done as a matter of course. It has been done. The meeting between the two holidays is usually canceled. And historically, it's because members of the body had young children.
If I could add a comment to that too, Counselor. Thank you for bringing up. If I've seen in the past, as Mr. Clerk mentions, common practice as well. The way I look at it too, it's between the holidays, the Christmas, and the New Year. And it's, I think, you know, say plainly, I think everybody is busy and it's a meeting that's normally, if we were to have, to be short in a way. And that's why it is on the agenda for a vote. This is not automatic. If the wish of the body happened to think that it's not wanted, it's not needed. Individually, you can vote no to the vote is down, but I, for one, I feel this is an appropriate recommendation.
So, my question is, how does it get on here? Just because it's in the past doesn't mean it works that way, because this is a whole new council. So, I'm just trying to figure out how these things get here, that's all. And I think the clerk explained it, but I won't be voting for it, but thank you.
Okay. Because, any other questions or comment on this one? At this point, normally take a voice vote, but I'd like a motion to accept this and then we'll do a roll call. Motion to adopt by Counselor Yem. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Rook. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rohr.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchey.
No.
Uh, ten yeses.
I don't see that we have a public meeting tonight, right, Mr. Clerk?
What's that? No public hearings tonight.
At this point, we are at section four. These are the city council motions. We'll start with 4.1, a motion by Counselor Yem, request city manager have the proper department reexamine the placement of stop signs and the stop yield lines in relation to crosswalk throughout the city. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Leahy. We don't have a right to speak on this one, Mr. Clerk, right?
No.
Counselor Yem, do you have any comments on your motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to speak last week. I was out sick, and thank you for bringing back the motion. I filed this motion after reading about a five-year-old girl who was killed after being struck by a tractor trailer while on a crosswalk with her family in Andover, Massachusetts. It's apparent this was hit home hard for me. The town and mass dot conducted a road safety audit and made some changes immediately, including moving the vehicle's stop and yield lines back further from the crosswalk, like in the picture number one that you see there. Previously, on the left of the picture, it's a current was by the accident, and then after the accident, the cross, the stop and the yield line was moved back about 40 or 50 per the dot, you know, suggestion. I'm not a traffic engineer, I just want to make that disclaimer, but from reading the story and reading the 2009 Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual by the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration, it's called MAT-CD, I realized that our city's streets and roadways need some safety audit. And let me show you picture number two, showing that even a new Thorndike Street lot overpass crossing. As you can see, it's similar to the picture number one that was, shows up. The line in relation to the crosswalk is very close, so if a tractor trailer set it up on the traffic and the light turned green, a young person crosses the street in her bike or walking, he could not see the young child because the line was so close to the crosswalk. So, and then this is, this is the situation that we are facing in our cities. And if I may show a picture number four. Number four is about the, this is where Parker and Wilder Street. Parker, this is traveling northbound towards Stevens Street from, from the, from the connectors. So, as you can see, this is a really strange arrangement. You have a crosswalk before the stop and the yield line and the stop sign. If a driver and pedestrian crossing it, they have to take the matter into their own hand. So, if I can show the similar picture on number four, it's about, that's the southbound on Parker and, and Wilder Street. As you can see, Calory Park, which is across the street, and the parent who take the children to the park will face some significant danger by crossing the street there. It's a four-way stop, all that corner is really in that situation. So, this is something that I want to bring to the attention of our cities, that we need to do something before the tragedy happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. No, I just want to say, I think this is great observation by Counselor Yem, and that last picture, you know, we've all seen it and accepted it and not paid attention to it. So, these are the things, the small things that need to get corrected, not a lot of money, and it should be first on the list next year to get fixed. So, thank you for bringing it up.
Counselor Getchey?
I grew up on that corner, so there's really no way, except for take out that crosswalk, because you can't see if you go four feet prior to the crosswalk, or you'd be just running through. So, the only way to fix crosswalks like that is get rid of them. So, there's no way that you can meet some of the MUTCD on those. So, I think that it's a good motion to look at some of where the crosswalks are, but you may be also putting pedestrians out of crosswalks, because that crosswalk shouldn't be there.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Here and now, on the favor of the eye opposed by no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. The next motion is 4.2. This is the motion by Counselor Robinson, request city manager have the proper department work with surrounding communities.
Mr. Mayor.
Is that?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Uh, I move to table, item number 4.2.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Yem. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Janess? Yes. Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
No.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Uh, Counselor Rohr?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getchey?
No.
Eight yeses.
The next motion is motion number four.
I got a point of personal privilege, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson, go right ahead.
Um, I'd just like to go on the record. So, I'm not sure if people are well aware that I pay attention at home, but the city currently only can provide 165 with the protocol beds, 130 nightly at LTLC, additional 23 beds to 26 beds in Chelmsford CTI Ran Hotel, and some of those double. We are December 12th today, and we are very short on the amount of winter protocol beds. And so, I would just like to make the viewers aware that this is definitely very time-sensitive. It's very important.
Your Honor, you're speaking about the motions.
I'm speaking about my motions, excuse me. And so, you know, 100.
Your Honor, we just voted not to.
Counselor Robinson, the motion to table is not debatable.
I'm not debating anything. I'm explaining a point of personal privilege as to why I brought this forward. That's all I'm talking. I'm not, just, I'm putting this on the record, why this is timely and it's very important. And people's lives are being played with as a result of this.
And I think the department heads are working on this.
Thank, thank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We now go to the next motion, motion 4.3, Counsel Robinson, request city manager provide an update on status. Counselor Leahy? Motion by Counselor Leahy. Do we have a second? Counsel, second by Counselor Janess. Again, our motion is table, is not debatable. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
No.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Uh, Counselor Rohr?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getchey?
No.
Eight yeses.
The next motion is 4.4, a motion by Counselor Noon, request city manager provide city council with a report concerning the number of positions in the city dedicated to oversight and compliance with the city's tax increment financing, shorthand TIFs, TIFs, and tax increment exemptions, TIES. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Rook. Any comment, Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The idea around, behind this is that to, I know the city has lists of company and developers that we give tip to, and there's some term and conditions to that tip, right? And we want to know also who's monitored that complying. The, again, the idea behind TIF is that to spur development and, you know, a job and alike. But, you know, we just want to know how many developer and all company that we give tip to. And for some of us at home, or some of us here that may not know, what's the term and condition of that agreement? You know, what happened when that agreement's not met? Who's going to enforce it? My understanding, in the past, we have the. Uh, my understanding, in the past, we have the, uh, the economic development, uh, uh, person in the downtown do the enforcement, uh, and working with the state and the assessor office in, in looking into this. So I'd like a report on that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none. On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion is item four point five. Counsel Noon, request city manager provide city council with the report concerning strategies the city can employ to generate revenues from its excess properties, including properties received through tax title. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Mercia. Any comment, Counsel Noon?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Um, so our main revenue source, as, as we all know, that tax and fee, uh, user fee. Um, I know that other than that, the, um, you know, sometime one-time, uh, uh, resource of through, let's say MSBA, um, that we, uh, apply to do, uh, roofing and, and, and heating, as well as the, um, grant, you know, from state or federal. Uh, I think that we need to look at the property, uh, the city properties that have been sitting and not being used, not being turned into taxable use. Uh, I know that, you know, the managers alluded to earlier, um, you know, before the meetings that, uh, there's some properties that being turned into usable tax. Uh, that is something that we need to do and we need to do more of it. Uh, so, um, and, and I know that, um, that, uh, you know, if we, we shouldn't, we can't just keep on turn to the taxpayer and just say, let's increase more taxes. Do what we can, everything that we can possible, looking for those, uh, you know, uh, resources, uh, revenues, uh, before we turn to, uh, the taxpayer. Thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you to my colleague for bringing this forward. I, I think it's, uh, a good idea to be looking at this, this kinda stuff, uh, for opportunities here. Did we ever move forward with that tax title auction, um, that was in process? Do, I just, I can't remember whether or not that was done.
Through Mr. Manager to the CFO.
Uh, Counselor, I, I don't believe we moved forward with the auction due to the, um, the decision, the Supreme Court decision. We put a pause on the process. Um, Mr. McKenna is, Attorney McKenna is here. Uh, if there are more detailed questions, he, he administers parts of the process with the Treasurer's Office. Um, but that has really changed our strategy, um, for disposing of some of these properties. And so we're reexamining, um, sort of the cost benefit, um, to, to using that process. We did, uh, while we did not move forward with the, the auction, we did advertise the tax titles and did receive a lot of the revenue, um, through the advertisement process. Um, and so a lot of times when we move forward with advertising delinquent taxes, either through the process, by advertising in the newspaper, people realize, um, maybe they missed a payment or something, it will come in and pay. Or, um, through the letters that are sent, sort of dunning notices out of the Treasurer's Office, they will come in. And so we did receive a lot of revenue related to those, but we did not, um, in the way that we've done an auction and sold the liens to a company like Talage, uh, that piece we did not move forward with, uh, because of the Supreme Court decision.
Okay. That Supreme Court decision came out May, June this past year, if that's correct. Um, so I'd be interested to know what our strategies are going forward, I guess. And I think this motion, uh, gets at the heart of that. So look forward to seeing this response. Thank you.
Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I did file a motion asking the city to kind of, uh, examine the, uh, the tax title sales because of the Supreme Court and also some cases that happened here in Massachusetts as well. And the, the case was that the, uh, the, the state, the city sell the property, if you owe ten thousand dollars and the property sold and profited thirty thousand dollars and, uh, the citizens in town kept the money without returning the money to the, uh, to the owner. And that's what happened in the case of Massachusetts. The Supreme Court, uh, was ruling on a case in, um, another state, but, so that's, I think that's a, that's a, a, a proper way to do, to hold it off and then until, and until such time that the, uh, the cities and, and legislation at the state level, uh, decided what to do to remedy this, uh, this, uh, inequity, uh, of law. Thank, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none. On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion, four point six, is also by Counsel Noon, request city manager work with state delegation to file a bill similar to S B one, one zero, an act relative to residency status passed by the New Hampshire State Senate in August two thousand twenty-three that requires municipalities to coordinate assistance options with other municipalities when it is determined unreasonable for a person to physically return to the municipality of origin. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Scott. Any comment, Counsel Noon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, um, you know, concern that raised by some of my colleague here, um, uh, around the issues of, you know, um, unhoused population flocking into the city of Lowell, uh, from nearby city and towns and that urging those city and town to share the cost. Um, and so I filed motions, um, and motion response came last week. Uh, the house, uh, the homeless coordinators, uh, Maura Fitzpatrick, uh, suggest that, uh, to, uh, you know, ask this, our state delegation, uh, to file bills similar to New Hampshire. And the language, um, after August twenty twenty-three, uh, basically mayor the language in, uh, the, um, uh, the bill, uh, the, the house bill, uh, the, the senate bill in New Hampshire. The point in this bill is to tie individual to city and town and require that city and town to pay for emergency housing. Uh, I don't know how, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how, uh, that will work, uh, but I hope that the manager will work with the state delegation and to file that. And then from there, the law department can figure out, uh, how we go about doing it if we can do it. Uh, so this has been done in New Hampshire's already. Uh, so, um, you know, we just want share costs from other neighbor city and town. There's not too much to ask. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none. On the favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next motion is motion four point seven. Counsel Getchier, request city manager provide an update on implementation of the three-one-one system. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Mercia. Any comment, Counsel Getchier?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Um, you know, we, we started to put this in place. We have budgetary items that I, I really would like to know just where we are currently on it. Are we moving forward? What, is there challenges to get it up and running? Um, and again, there's also a piece to it, the language piece. Are we gonna have it in more than one language? You know, so it, it's a, an interesting system to watch and, and I think developing will help the city as long as we lay it out right the first time. And if we can get multiple languages into it also, so I'm interested in just seeing, um, an update on the implementation. Thank you.
And are the comments or questions on this? Counsel Scott?
I do have a question, just procedurally for, um, Attorney Williams. Uh, do we have to untable the motion that was the exact same one that we tabled before we take this one up? Is that proper protocol to follow to substitute Counsel Getchier's motion for the prior motion?
Through Mr. Manager to the solicitor.
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, if that, that motion was identical or similar in nature to something that was already on the table, the procedure is to, you have to actually make a motion to remove it from the table and then vote on it at that point. And it takes majority vote to take it off the table.
Okay. So could I make a motion to untable Counsel Robinson's, uh, motion and substitute Counsel Getchier's motion?
Second.
I, I would ask the make of the motion to make an amendment, uh, the, if you don't mind, Counsel Scott, uh, to make the motion to amend it, to untable it, uh, this motion. And the person to second that was Counsel Mercia, except you by, by the counselor. Any other comments or questions on this? So the, so we have two motions now, what's untable first, and then we'll take the second motion as written on the agenda. So the motion to untable it, a second by, uh, Counsel Mercia. Do we need to roll call this one, Mr. Clerk, or some, to untable it, we need to roll call, correct? Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
No.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchier?
Yes.
Motion's untabled.
And, uh, the, the motion, as we had spoke, we had a second by Counsel Mercia, the same. If there are other comments or questions, do a voice vote on favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now move on to the next item, section five, communications from city manager. Five point, these are the motion response under five point one, A and B. We'll start with the alphabet A. Uh, this is the motion response in regards to federal and state housing funding. Any comments or question, Counsel Noon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, uh, to, uh, Giovanni Byrosis for the report. So, um, the report, it's a very good one. The grant that you receive, um, question, the grant that you, through you, uh, to, uh, the manager and to maybe Giovanni Byros, um, the grant that, the federal grant that you receive, are they, uh, distributed to, uh, non-pro, just nonprofit or also private developer as well?
Uh, through Mr. Manager to, uh, D P Director.
Thank you. Uh, so the, it, there are different funding sources, um, listed on this. So home funds, uh, are funds that are eligible to be distributed to both nonprofit organizations that, um, develop housing and commit to creating subsidized units, but they can also go to private developers. Again, the, the commitment of funds requires them to keep those particular units as subsidized, but those funds are eligible to go to private for-profit developers as long as they commit to renting those units at a subsidized rate essentially, um, for the term of the agreement.
Uh, uh, home, home investment partnership and home app as well as emergency solution, are all those is going to, uh, both nonprofit and private developer?
Home investment partnerships, yes. Home ARP can also, uh, fall under that category, but again, home ARP is, um, particularly for, uh, creating housing that will address issues of, around homelessness. And so those would have to be extremely low-income subsidized units, and that would be the only way that they would be eligible in order for it to go to a, a private, uh, developer.
How do you, how do you address, uh, the, uh, private developer compliant? Um, how, how does that work? Uh, yeah.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, three to the counsel. So Counsel, in regards to the home investment partnership that we had, um, I think this is getting to the crux of the, the question. The city of Lowell First Time Home Buyers Program, we gave money to that, the home housing rehab, and one of the bigger pieces was the, uh, Broadway, uh, Boston Capital that has actually just recently, I believe, changed their name, Assistant City Manager, I believe. Uh, well, anyhow, that's the one over at the, the, um, the old, um, food bank. That was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then other pieces, uh, community development housings is, is things that we've done. So inside of that home investment partnership, we have obviously public being the city and then private partnerships that we created over, uh, over at the, the former food bank, if, if that answers your question, sir.
So, so the private developer that, that receiving this federal, um, um, you know, housing, uh, grant, um, are they, like, say, you do, um, making sure they comply, complying with, or how, how often do you, you making sure that that happen? Because this is, this is not just one-year term. This is many-year term and how you do that.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, three to the counsel. Uh, Counsel, there's a compliance check every single year with not only the city, they have paperwork that they have to send to us as well as, uh, D H C D from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's, uh, it's my knowledge that every entity, uh, needs to set that in every single year. And I, you know, there may have been, uh, none that I know of at this time that have, um, ceased to, uh, to keep the money because they haven't, uh, done their job. In the event, if I was a, a resident there and I started to make more money, uh, than I could, uh, well, that entity would, would move me to another apartment, ensuring that that property was still, uh, available to, and I'm making this up, uh, to a resident that was zero to fifty percent of the median income. So this compliance check is, uh, held seriously by D H C D to ensure that, uh, the homeownership, uh, excuse me, homeownership, I apologize, uh, that the home stays where it is, um, meant to be. Uh, one of the most recent ones we've done, uh, you can look anywhere along, um, uh, Jackson Street, and those are going on, those have gone under compliance checks to ensure that, uh, apartment number one is, you know, zero to sixty and apartment number, number two is zero, uh, sixty to eighty and so on and so forth. So that's something that D H C D did, does take very serious because they can then pull those funds back. I just don't know of any that have been, um, defunded, if, if you would, if that's the appropriate terminology, for not following those guidelines. Typically, the organizations that do this, this is their, their book of business, is their line of business, similar to some of the organizations that we have here in the city that are, that are doing a fine job.
So there is an annual compliance check and?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate this report, um, but I was hoping to see a little more detail, um, particularly, uh, reading this, um, I don't think it's abundantly clear to me how these dollars affect both, let's say, supply side and demand side of the housing. Some of these dollars go to creating units, the supply side, and others go towards subsidizing, um, residents' ability to afford those units, so subsidizing the demand. Um, I would really like to see a breakdown of where this funding has gone and not, not to the level of, you know, Joe and Sally Smith got three thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars for down payment assistance, none of that. Um, but just to understand how many units we've created versus how many, um, residents we've assisted to be able to afford those or other units in the community. Um, you know, I think that there's a lot of questions and a lot of, um, concern in the, in the city about the affordability of housing. Um, and so I think if we can go a level deeper on this so that we all understand a little better how this money's being put to work in our community and what the effects of it have really been, um, and how many new units we've been able to create with this money, um, I think is a question that, that certainly on my mind is likely on others' minds as well. Um, I think it's important to know how much money we're spending and in which direction here. Helping residents is great and helping them be able to afford a home in our city is wonderful and I'm glad we can do that. Uh, but we do have to recognize that subsidizing the demand side of this curve does impact the supply side as well. That supply-demand curve is gonna be there no matter what. So, you know, if we have a supply problem, um, everyone would agree with that. And I think the more that we subsidize the demand side, the worse it may can make that. Um, so I, I think we need to make sure we're addressing both sides of this in order to, to really kinda tip the scales in the, in the direction of, of folks who, so they can afford, uh, to buy in the city of Lowell or live in the city of Lowell if they're renting. Uh, so I'd be very interested in seeing a breakdown like that on these dollars, um, to really understand that.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, three to the counsel. Uh, Counsel, that's, you're correct. Uh, I have a piece here that would be able to show you and we can have it sent to everybody in regards to the C D B G public service piece, uh, out of the community development block ransom, where that money went, as well as the C D B G non-public service. Uh, and when you get into the home funds, it, you know, describes here, uh, and it probably should have been included in your packet, we were just talking about the, the macro numbers, if you would, but, um, this, uh, primarily deals with, uh, non-public service, what exactly that means, E S G monies that only certain organizations can apply for, uh, for, for day shelter and things of that nature, um, as well as homeless diversion. So, uh, I, I believe that we can send this out to the counsel this evening just to have a, a look. But it's also an interesting thing, Counsel, that you bring up with the housing production as, uh, we, we've been talking a little bit in regards to production. I believe I brought it up a couple of meetings ago. Uh, it is my, still, it's still my hope to have something to the counsel for your review of parcels that we believe is something that we could aggressively go after in two thousand twenty-four to discuss about housing production, whether it be affordable homeownership or what I still refer to as workforce, workforce housing, uh, which is some of the properties that we have, um, along, uh, Jackson Street in, in, in that area. Uh, so once again, I can have this probably in your emails, uh, probably in the next few minutes, uh, just the breakdown of what, uh, what we looked at, the, the different type of program, incomes, uh, the totals, but also if you could- the totals, but also if you could give, I'm going to say, probably two to three more weeks, right, probably right after the holidays, we're going to be able to give you what the council has already voted on. The council's already voted on what is commonly referred to as the MBTA zoning, the DMU, as well as the, missing the third one, jam, the jam plan, sorry about that, the jam, the jam acre plan. So, with those overlay districts, we're going to point out where, what we think where properties can be built, who owns, well, who owns them, especially if they're us, or, or partners with the MBTA, and hopefully I can have that in the next, I'll say, three, three weeks. And that gets right to the point, I think, of your, your, your question is, how much more housing production can we push? And I think when this council adopted that MBTA zone, I think that is going to make a difference for all of us, and also open up some of those properties, if that's answering your question, sir.
Yeah, that, that gets to, to the thrust of it, and I appreciate that. The report you mentioned, if that's fit for public consumption, can we include that in the minutes or some kind of addendum so that the public can find this report as well? So, that information is available for, for them? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a former director of the Cambodian organization that develop affordable housing, answered the question about monitoring, that the tenant is annually have to go through qualification with their incomes and, and assets and everything, so to make sure that they are still qualified for that assistance annually, so it's done annually. In addition to that, my second comment would be that moving forward, the home investment, the CDBG fund for affordable housing and to help the private developer, I would see as, I would like to see a certain percentage would be for homeownership, so this way we build a generational wealth for family who otherwise may not be able to afford to own a property, a home, so that's would be my, my recommendation in the future. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Here are none. The next motion response is the alphabet B, this is on, also on affordable housing, HO, any common question, Councilor Janes?
No, I just want to say thank you to the, the administration for looking at this and, you know, treating it with, with the seriousness that it deserves, and I look forward to seeing that housing production plan come forward, and look forward to try and pushing, pushing on that, as we talked about, so, yeah. So, the, the timeline on that, just, just to be clear, the housing production plan, we're hoping for first quarter of, or really January, February?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, yes, I'm hoping to have the, the overlay, what I'm referring to is the overlay districts, the actual maps, for the councils to, to take a look at, and then to actually get it out onto the street sometime. I, I don't know if I want to say the first quarter, I think I want to be careful on timing just because we do have to look at some zoning pieces there as well, I want to make sure that that is correct. Assistant City Manager, please correct me if that's?
These are slightly different things, so the, the map and the discussion we've been having about identifying priority development locations is something that's on a faster track and timeline, and something that, consistent with what the manager said, I think that we could bring back to the council in relatively short order. The housing production plan, the schedule of that is timed to align with the Lowell Ford Master Plan, which is set to be completed in the first quarter of the new year, and that we hope to bring it in front of the council for an actual formal adoption and vote sometime in February. So, those things are on slightly different timelines, but I think both of them will be something that this council will be seeing in short order.
Okay, thank you very much. I look forward to seeing all of that and, and pushing it forward. Thank you.
Councilor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick comment, quick questions regarding, similar to what, what the motion respond about the, the city of Cambridge? How do we make changes? Because the city of Cambridge did the change of the zoning, are we going to, to make some changes to lower the barriers so this would allow the, the 100% affordable housing in a certain overlay district? If that's the case, are we going to run into a situation similar to ADU, that we have to kind of battle it out and stuff like that? So, that's just my, my quick question. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, through Mr. Manager to DPD?
The mechanism to adopt something like this would be a zoning change, but one of the goals that DPD has been discussing throughout the work of the master plan is to essentially revisit the entirety of the city's zoning code of ordinances to, to see where we may make some adjustments and improvements. For example, this council has discussed things like shared parking, which our zoning language makes difficult, and so I think there are a number of things that are going to come out of that plan that may result in some suggested zoning changes, but the mechanism to do that would be essentially a process that this council would have to vote for, yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. How many units do you believe we have right now on the pipeline? Out of curiosity, Cambridge has listed 600 units, do you have any count on where we are right now? No? I don't want to put you on the spot, I was just?
Mr. Manager?
Council, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, we could get that number to you. We have a lot going on, and in just a different, different phases at this point.
We do have a lot going on, that's curious.
No, but it'd be, I wouldn't want to say an actual number, given, if I could, I'd rather shoot that email or bring it back to the next meeting, if that's okay.
Yep, very good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Here are none, that completes the motion response report, but the next two items are the information reports from the manager's office. The first one is on city overview. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call up Mr. Aaron Fox from Wastewater to discuss and go through this particular piece, I believe it's also companion items, some companion items that I hope all the councilors have on their desk. Mr. Fox?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city manager, and the council. This presentation is an overview of the EPA and Mass DEP regulatory requirements as described in the 2023 Lowell consent decree. I, I want to spend a minute going over some background information and to review what a combined sewer overflow is and what the cause is of a combined sewer overflow. In the City of Lowell, the City of Lowell has two types of sewer systems, a separated system and combined system. Now, in a separated system, there are two lines which run down the street, one is a sanitary line, which picks up wastewater, is referred to as a sewer, and then the other is a drain line, and this drain line trans, conveys storm water to wetlands and the, and rivers and other water-receiving bodies. The other kind is called the combined sewer, and this makes up 60% of the sewer in Lowell, and 50% of these pipes are over 100 years old. This is some of the oldest sewer within the city, and some of these pipes are as old as 150 years. Now, the way the combined sewer works, and this can be seen in the slide, on the left-hand side, the, during dry weather, there's one line in the street, both sanitary flow and storm flow go into the same line, so during dry weather, that flow is conveyed through the system, and it makes its way to the wastewater treatment facility, and where it's treated, and, and then discharged into the river. On the side next to it, that's what happens during wet weather. Stormwater also enters the same pipe, the pipe becomes overwhelmed, the treatment facility becomes overwhelmed, and then it is discharged into either the Merrimack, Concord, or Beaverbrook rivers through nine EPA permitted outfalls. In a typical year, the city has what they call this combined sewer overflow discharges of 330 million gallons per year. So, by federal and state mandate, as set forth in this consent decree, other WDU must monitor and eventually remove or control all CSO discharges to the river. So, what is a consent decree? An EPA consent decree is a court order between the EPA and the city that revolves around violations of the Clean Water Act mainly related to combined sewer overflows. The consent decree between the City of Lowell and the EPA mandates the city meet a schedule to reduce CSO frequency and volume through sewer separation. The EPA has issued consent decrees to other cities along the Merrimack River and within the region. So, this table here shows some of that. So, municipalities along the Merrimack River that have received a consent decree, Lowell, Haverhill, Lawrence, Nashua, Manchester, and Quincy and Lynn are also within the region, but they are not on the Merrimack. These are all consent decrees with the exception of Nashua that have come out in the last 10 years. The consent decrees are generally broken into four major parts, sewer separation, which is usually the largest cost of part of these consent decrees, ongoing maintenance requirements, so this is maintenance required to the system, catch basin cleaning, televising, infiltration and inflow removal, this is removal of groundwater from separated systems, and then storm water management requirements as set forth for our storm water systems. So, the following is brief history of the CSO regulatory history in Lowell. So, Lowell has been under an existing consent decree since 1988. Now, Lowell currently sits under that same consent decree now, and that consent decree also focuses on the elimination and control of CSO discharges. It is important to note too, that at this time in 1988, a $180,000 civil penalty was paid by the city at that time. The first steps to approaching the CSO issue, which is a large issue, took the form of two reports, the combined sewer overflow plan and the sewer separation preliminary plan. These plans laid out the groundwork for understanding of the CSO systems and future sewer separation systems. 2002, the utility completed its first long-term control plan. This is a plan for CSO control, and it was the first large-scale CSO project started by the city. Cost roughly $90 million, started in 2003, and construction ended in 2014, and this money was spent to CSO reduction through sewer separation, took place in the Highland neighborhoods, Sacred Heart neighborhoods, in Pawtucketville, if you see the picture on the slide, you can see flooding, this was actually after a storm, I think that was probably a foot deep at least, this is in the Sixth and Emery area up in Pawtucketville, and then after that sewer separation, there was no flooding in that area, and this is important that as part of these sewer separation plans, we address issues like these. 2014, phase two, the CSO long-term control plan, between 2015 and 2019, the utility initiated another CSO reduction, that cost roughly $15 million, and was some CSO that took place in the acre. During this time, the city also updated the treatment facility, along with the remote pump stations, and the rehabilitation of the Centerville flood protection systems. In 2019, the phase three of the long-term control plan was proposed to the EPA. This phase three that was proposed involved the building of storage tanks and a treatment facility at Hunts Falls. The plan was rejected by the EPA, and the reason cited at the time was the new facility would not eliminate CSOs, but would only partially treat them. The EPA wanted a plan that included sewer separation. The utility and EPA couldn't reach an agreement on the plan, so the EPA initiated consent decree negotiations, which started in 2022, June, and then, and then agreement was made in October of 2023. This map shows some of that work that was done since 2003, and it also lays out a, a rough view of what the sewer system looks like, the dark orange line represents large interceptor pipes, when those get overwhelmed, the CS, the permitted CSO stations are named on the map, those are the red squares, and that's where the CSO enters the river. So, between 2003, and call it 2016, the city accomplished what's roughly 1,150 acres of sewer separation, and that can be seen in the green highlighted area. This was a $105 million project, and, and so this gives you an idea of, of the scale of the work that the city had performed. So, the 2023 consent decree mandates that the city undertakes another large sewer separation project, and this map kind of shows what those projects could potentially look like. So, just to show the map real quick, all areas in blue on the map represent separated system, while the areas in yellow are combined, are still combined sewers within the city. The red hatched areas represent areas that are potential for sewer separation as, as described and required in the consent decree. One of those areas is Centerville, that's in the northern part of the city, and that is specifically spelled out within the consent decree. Other potential areas can be seen in red through, through, throughout the city, and these areas will be assessed, and then working with EPA based on CSO reduction, determine which areas will be separated. It's important as part of these projects for the residents that we make sure, it's not just about separating the, the CSO, but assessment needs to be based on sewer charging, street flooding, and also basin backups. These are important issues that the city has experience in remedying in, in the past, and we should do that again as part of these projects. Areas like Lakeview and Aiken, Coburn and Jewett, Gorman and Moore, St. James Street, Winwood and Douglas, the Boys and Girls Club in Middlesex Street, these are areas that should be, will be targeted as part of these potential. And the assessment will also be based on cost, constructability, surface disruptions, traffic, the availability of permitting for outfalls, and integration with other city So, the first sewer separation plan that will come out of part of the consent decree is separation of the Centerville neighborhood. This will take place in two phases. Construction is scheduled to start around 2025, and by the end of phase two will probably be 2031. So, what that first phase will look like will be the installation of a main drain throughout the, the neighborhood and area, and that, and that main drain will convey surface flows from Humphreys Brook, Building Street, and Hovey's wetlands that, that are right now going into the sewer system and taking up capacity within that system. Phase two of that project will be the installation of the sideline drains and sewer separation of the remaining sewer areas as outlined in red. The infrastructure renewal coordination, as part of this work, we'll be looking to do road restoration in the areas that are affected by construction, which will be most of that area in red. Also, the city is, the utility is actively engaging in coordination efforts for utility upgrades, both private and public, so national grid, water, and DPD and other stakeholders in the area, so we, so while the streets are under construction, there can be some rehabilitation of those utilities. So, what will this cost? Right now, it's estimated that the, the capital cost is between 150 and 200 million dollars. This is still in development, as we're still in the conceptual phase, and a lot of the potential areas haven't been named yet. The consent decree is going to require a lot of capital planning, and further planning beyond just sewer separation, it'll include enhanced collection system maintenance, inflow and infiltration removal. EPA reporting requirements are above and beyond what we do now, we have already submitted several reports to the EPA, and in 2034, one of the reports we'll need to submit is the next CSO long-term control plan. That control plan will then dictate CSO reduction for the next 20 years in the city. Also included is storm water management requirements, and this includes ordinances, one of which is on this evening's agenda as a first reading. And then finally, the civil penalty, the EPA is letting a $200,000 civil penalty. EPA one, which encompasses, the New England region has historically mandated civil penalties as part of the municipal consent decree, including all major wastewater treatment facilities on the Merrimack River. This, this penalty would be due within 60 days of an executed agreement, which is expected in March of 2024. These are complex projects, and as the utility moves forward with proactively, to meet the consent decree, it will be proactively engaging Lowell residents. One way we'll do this is with a sewer survey, which right now is available on the website. It's important, we know where the street flooding is, where people's basements are backing up, so this can be incorporated into future projects. can be incorporated into future projects. We will also be sending out a mail or to let citizens know to go on that this survey is available. Survey is available in multiple languages. I will attend neighborhood association meetings, and of course, use website and social media to reach out to the public also. Public input will help guide and plan our priorities as we move through this consent decree. At this point, if anyone has any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fox, for the presentation. Before we open the floor to discussion, there are three items on the agenda that are relevant to this report. I'd like a motion to bring it up out of order to discuss it along with this presentation. The items are 6.4, 6.5, and 8.1. If I could ask a member of council to suspend the rule, bundle and bring out order to discuss this presentation. Motion by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Mosier. Let me read these three items first, and then we'll open up the floor to discussion. 6.4 is a vote, EPA consent decree. 6.5 is a vote, transfer $200,000, EPA consent decree. And the last item in this bundle is 8.1, which is an ordinance, amend Chapter 272, Water and Sewer Order Goal 10. This is going to be referred to a public hearing on January 2, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. After the discussion, we need a motion, and we'll do a roll call on the two votes regarding the EPA and the money. Any comments or questions for Mr. Fox? Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple small ones. One is, the towns that feed into our wastewater system, do any of them have any combined sewer situations that are feeding into Duck Island, or are they separated systems entirely at this point? Do we know?
I don't know exactly. I believe they, and I can find that out, Councilor, I believe they're mostly separated systems, if not fully separated systems.
Okay. Because if they were combined, that would just compound our issue, correct? The way that everything flows?
Yep.
Okay. So that's a question I have. Just if, you know, any of the towns need to do this work, do they have plans to do that work as well? And then this may not be something you can answer. It may not be something anyone in this room can answer. I'm just curious if we know what the EPA does with these civil penalties that they collect. Do they use that to help anyone or to continue enforcement of other communities? Throw parties? I don't know.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know what they do with those civil penalties.
Okay. It'd be nice to know, but I don't know how we could find that out. But thank you for the report. There's a ton of work here. We've talked about it time and time again, but it's good to see the process moving forward and look forward to seeing how big of an apple, how big of a bite of the apple we can take and move forward on this. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Thank you, Director Fox, for the report. We just did the smoke test. Do we have results? Are you happy with what's going on? Have we separated some of the drains from illegal tie-ins or anything?
So a lot of what the smoke testing showed us is in the CSO areas that, yes, all the drains are tied in. We were also able to find cracks in the system, smoke that comes up through the street. Some houses did incur some smoke within the buildings, and so we had people out there to help address that. But that shows either they had like a dry trap, or they had some connection to the system as it was being smoked. So it did provide us with some information that'll help.
Was it substantial? Was it worth the money?
We actually stopped the smoke testing as we were ongoing with it. As we were proceeding, I didn't feel like it was worth quite the information we were getting, so we did stop it. Yep.
Just for a highlight, and I don't know if you agree with this, but one of the worst things that can happen at any wastewater treatment plant is you expand it without cutting down the contamination flow into it. So the right thing to do is spend the money in sewer separation so you're not treating clean drinking water in a facility. So some places decide that they want to expand because they think that's the easy answer, but the true answer is what the EPA is doing is to separate and try to force municipalities to do that, because putting clean water back into conservation lands is where it belongs. It doesn't belong going through your treatment facility the way it has for all these years. And I think it's kind of a travesty that over all these years, only, you know, $3 million a year for 35 years was spent. And that's just, it's a sad state when you start looking at some of these places that we had major problems. When you did this study, are there higher flow areas, or have we not put the sensors in to see what the flow rates were in those mains before we're starting the separation process? Because if we can separate down now to a position where we're not taking on more than the excess amount of the plant, we may be able to lay a little bit lower on the separation of other areas and actually treat that until we get the funding sources to do it. Are there higher flow areas that are determined, or is it, we're just going to go after the ones that it's flowing into the roads and call those the high flow? Because those could actually be designed with smaller pipes, as you know, and that's why it's overflowing, but may not actually be the high-flow areas that are causing the actual CSOs?
Yeah. So just to, Council, to build on your comments, one of the areas, so in the Centerville area, one of the first things I was going to do is build that main drain, and that will remove two wetlands which now flow into the sewer system, and also a brook. These flow into the sewer system, they take up capacity, these go to the treatment facility where they're processed and incur a cost. So sewer separating out just those flows as part of the main drain line will benefit the utility and reduce flows to the utility. Now, as far as our understanding of the system, we have just put out 63 level sensors. Actually, we had just finished a study, and so we're just getting back information from that now. So level flow sensors located throughout the system. So this was done throughout the city, and it was done in each sewer shed and the flow into the treatment facility so we can get a better understanding of what the flows are to the, into the facility and throughout the system, which will help build this plan for these potential areas that will be sewer separated. So yes, we are looking into that information now.
So currently, what is the capacity of the plant in gallons?
The rated capacity of the plant is 32 million gallons per day.
So during rain events, what is the average that is going through it?
So it's a little tricky with rain events. So the rated capacity for dry weather for the facility is 32 million gallons per day. For wet weather, it's 110. We institute a bypass around certain processes that allows the plant to reach 110 during wet weather. And so we will reach 110 during wet weather, usually at the start of rainstorms, and we always achieve this before we have a CSO. So our goal is to always bypass and get as much treatment as possible before any sewer overflows are initiated.
So we actually, in a rain event, get three times the amount we can actually treat?
For a full
Roughly, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, roughly 60 mg/d is bypassed.
Okay. So
That's a million gallons.
Are we capable, again, if we can find the high-flow areas, obviously, we're trying to reduce that down quick so that we don't have those flash events where we're overwhelmed at the 6 million, and that's really, because it could trigger early and then go away, and we still could fall on the 32 million at the end of all the events. But when you look at your charts, and they're really good, I look at the civil penalties, and maybe the manager can answer the question better than you can. When we started into the negotiations, how much money was the EPA looking for in a civil penalty?
Put Mr. Manager to Mr. McKenna.
Yeah. Towards the beginning, it was about $150,000 to each government, the state and the federal, it was over $300,000. We negotiated, they wouldn't go any less than $200,000. That was the least they would accept, given the prior 1988 civil penalty. What was it, 186? 28?
Was this going on prior to your time as city manager? The discussions?
Christine O'Connor had been negotiating, and then we took it over, I think, like in November, when I came on as the acting first assistant.
Let's see if Mr. Manager has a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, it had started a little bit prior to me getting here. The patience, and I think this would be correct, Mr. McKenna, patience was running a little thin, given the fact that it'd been going on for a few years. So.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Mosier?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Fox. What is the situation with the area on Douglas Road, Wynwood area? You know that many times we had a lady come before the podium, Lynn Daly, and she talked about the flooding. And I know that every time it rained, it would reach a certain level of flooding to a particular home. But then, because, I don't know why, but because when rain would come again, it would go even higher. So it got like two houses up that never had gotten water flooding there before. So it's progressing. It's getting worse. So do we have any intention in the report to have that looked at as well?
Yes. So that, because of the area, the city is a very complex issue to solve. It's been a long-standing issue. And I mean, I agree with the council, the flooding there is extreme. So what we are doing is we are looking at different technologies, both storage tanks, sewer separation, the possibility of pumping it to a different area, and to be able to solve that. And we hope to implement some of those plans and start construction within a year or so.
Within a what?
Within a year or so.
Okay. I'll hold you to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say one more thing is, when you look at the estimated cost of $150 to $200 million, I don't want anybody leaving here thinking that is going to solve it, because that's not going to solve it. You're still going to have the CSOs. You're still going to have diversion. So, Mr. Fox, in your opinion, what do you think a rough estimated cost to fix this is? Because we heard at one point it was a billion dollars or over that. And I think that people shouldn't leave this chamber thinking that just because we're investing $150 to $200.
But would you know, Mr. Fox, when do you anticipate the engineering somewhat being completed or first phase of engineering? I know we don't have a number, but, you know, as far as the engineering, what timeframe do you have on that?
So for the engineering, for what we'll call this 10 years' worth of work, that $150 to $200 million, a preliminary design will be ready by the end of 2024. So this time, the end of 2024, we'll have those areas approved by the EPA. Those areas approved by the EPA, and that's when the preliminary design is actually required as part of the consent decree.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fox. And it's important to know that this particular piece, given if it's 2024 and if it stays on track, when we're putting this together with the engineers, the EPA still has to approve. From that point forward, this will be a capital expenditure, planning it out over the next, I'm going to say 10 years at this point, and then revisiting it from time, from time and time again. But that, we're hoping that that will happen. At this time, I just want to say thank you very much as well to Mr. Fox and his team for all the work that they've been doing on this, as well as Mr. McKenna from the Law Department and his team. They've been doing some fabulous work and seen some negotiations in my day, and they're pretty good stuff. So thank you to both the Law Department and wastewater for that. But we are not, this will be something we will be discussing for many years to come.
Any other comments or questions? Here and now, I go to the managers' comments. Thank both of you and your entire two departments for working very hard on this for many, many years. With that said, I'd like a motion to, well, two, three items that will bundle to vote, and the ordinance. We can do a roll call, so I need a motion to adopt by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Mosier. Mr. Clerk, this is on two votes and the ordinance that would be referred to the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson. Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchia?
Yes.
11 years.
The next information report is on the ORP program. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. This is actually an exciting piece, the Accelerator Repair Program. As the council knows, last year, given around September of last year, we were lucky enough to have the Wang Middle School, the boiler was replaced, the roof was replaced. At the Robinson, we had the roof, the doors, the windows. And at the Shaughnessy, the boiler and the McAuliffe was the roof. There's going to be a vote tomorrow by the MSBA, and it is our hope, and I'm cautiously optimistic, that we will be looking at another opportunity to provide assistance to the Butler Middle School, where we're looking at a boiler. The Bartlett Partnership School, another boiler, Henry J. Robinson, and I want to make sure I'm saying this right, this is the second boiler to make sure that we have redundancy at the Robinson. The McAvenue Elementary School, a boiler, and the Shaughnessy School is a roof. So all toll, the breakdown, the estimated cost for the breakdown is $13.6 million, of which our local share will be $3.4 million. Commissioner St. Seere will be on the phone call tomorrow, as will the assistant city manager, to ensure there are no questions. But we've had some great, great support by our local delegation, as well as a letter that had just gone off today that would be the availability for the council to see, as well as everyone else. But this is an exciting time. This is probably, I think, the first time in a while that we've had the opportunity to hit this Accelerator Repair Program as aggressively as we had, as we have in the past. And this is something that I think is a big win and a big takeaway, given the fact that the council is continuing to reduce natural gas use citywide over from last year. It's a reduction of approximately 14%. Some of these boilers and systems that we're utilizing are just higher efficiency. They're better efficiency of what's happening. And it's that opportunity that we've been talking about to try to really attack what is happening within the school systems themselves. And I know that there was a discussion last night that the assistant city manager attended. So this is an exciting opportunity with the Accelerator Repair Program, and we're just looking for any comment or any discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. There's another item that related to this presentation. Need a motion, 7.1. I need a motion to suspend the rule and take item 7.1 out of order to discuss it with the ORP presentation by Councilor Drinkwater, second by Councilor Yem. The 7.1 is a lone order, MSBA Accelerate Repair Program. This will be referred to public hearing on January 2, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, there's a registered speaker on that matter.
Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Jonathan Grossman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council. I just want to point out that we've been here before. What we're doing now, and I appreciate the fact that it's, on the one hand, it's good that the MSBA is funding this kind of upgrades, and we need the upgrades. There's no doubt about it. On the other hand, we are now investing in several, investing in several new gas boilers that are burning fossil fuel, namely methane gas. And we know that, A, that runs counter to the state's climate goals, B, it's not, burning gas for heat does not have the best health outcomes, and C, in the long run, although it will save money from what we had before, using gas instead of cleaner, clean heat sources like electricity or geothermal will get progressively more expensive as the rest of the state moves off gas. You may have noticed last week that the state's Department of Public Utilities issued a finding or a legal finding that they will no longer allow gas companies to build into their rates expansion of new gas pipelines or new gas systems if, unless they can prove there were no feasible non-gas alternatives. I think one of the media outlets' headline was Massachusetts Turns the Corner on Natural Gas, and here we are in Lowell investing in it. And you And you may recall about eight months ago, when the same issue came up, there was kind of a fuss about it because it was pointed out that the more affluent towns can avoid this problem. And the less affluent towns and cities are stuck having to rely on MSBA financing. And one of the problems, in addition to the health outcomes and the contribution to climate change, is that as more and more homes and buildings and businesses move off gas, the cost to stay on gas will go up because there's fewer ratepayers funding the same infrastructure. And we're going to be on the wrong end of that. And I understand that there doesn't appear to be alternative ways to finance this at the moment. But I do recall that there, as a result of a city council motion, a letter was sent, I believe, by city manager to both our delegation and as well to the MSBA, asking that they do something about their policy which prohibits financing, switching fuels. You can only get the financing if you continue to use the fossil fuels, if that's what you used before. That policy needs to be changed. We have to find a way to get out of this dilemma. It's in the best interests of the kids. It's in the best interest of the city long-term in terms of financing. And it's in the best interest of everybody in terms of the climate issue. So I hope maybe there could be some follow-up on that letter to see what the MSBA is doing about it. And maybe we won't be back at this in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council and to Mr. Grossman. I've worked with Mr. Grossman, I'd say, probably almost for the better part of a decade in regards to talking about energy pieces. Currently, right now, as all of you know, this council has been trying to push forward for cleaner alternatives. And I do want to stress that the 14% that we have reduced citywide, that is a good piece. The speaker is correct. We're trying to get there. But currently, right now, MSBA programs dictate what is eligible. And with a 75% paying from the MSBA, I think it's something we need to do. One of the challenges that we have right now is the electrical systems within our schools and our buildings. I would argue, or might argue, that they might need to be upgraded as well with the greater load that would be created by an electrical system. And I, from my past life, the other challenges I think we have that we need to realize is the transmission lines, as well as the distribution lines. So what the gentleman was bringing up is very valid. We do need to transfer at some point. I just don't think at this point in time, where we are as a city, we can do that until MSBA starts to change the rules as well as until the local utility or the grid itself starts to change out their transmission lines, distribution lines, to accept a greater load that probably would, I think, and I think we would agree with this, Mr. Grossman, that would be transferred onto the electrical system. So we are doing the best we can with what we have available to apply for. I've always respected the gentleman's thoughts on this, but this is something that we need to continue to move forward on. And we do need to continue to push Beacon Hill, had been there myself, to make some of these changes. So I just want to make, you know, that point clear. And I know the council, with the leadership here in the City Council, we should be having something. Let me see here. I believe that Ms. Rose was discussing what she'll be addressing in February. And we're going to be looking to discuss major topic areas throughout 2024, and one of them being energy as to the aggressiveness that we are taking because this particular council is really, really wants to get aggressive on some of our solar pieces. So I'd like you to put a pin on that for just right now. I think we have a lot going on. You're going to see what's been happening in '23 and what will come in '24. So, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Grossman, for your comments.
Any other comments or questions either on the ARP presentation or the public hearing? Another comment. Counsel Gitchio?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. If this is awarded, how long before the money has to be spent?
Mr. Manager?
Counselor, we tend to, we're looking right now for summer, the summer of 2024, and then construction to be completed by October of 2024. That would be the goal. Some of the challenges, I believe, are always what's in the pipeline, what is available. But, you know, from situations, and I kind of look back here from the Robinson, that was one of the schools that myself and the Assistant City Manager had looked at previously. We had no redundancy at that school. There was some major problems. We're also working on, councilors, to get a list of all the schools, what has been happening, when the changes have occurred, when the changes will occur. Once again, that was a discussion that I had a chance to hear last night through the meeting, that I think most of you were there over at the Patacaville Memorial. So that is, that, standing up the, something where it's easily to get to, a dashboard. Thank you very much, Mr. Machado. So that dashboard is something we have been discussing, to have all the schools, as well as city buildings on. But, Counselor, that is what our plan is. And it really is just my concern, and my cautionary note is always the throughput time in the manner of can we indeed get the materials that we need?
So if that's the case, can ARP money be used for the $3.4 million?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can investigate which portion of that can happen. I know we have some monies, and I know we'll be talking to the superintendent of schools in regards to ask some monies as well, as to what can happen with that. But as far as for tomorrow, MSBA needs to know that we're committed to the entire amount. And that entire amount, ladies and gentlemen, is $13.64 million to ensure that the MSBA grant would be pay-as-you-go. Maybe that's the $10 million coming back. That's the 75%. So although it may appear as a bond, I may be leaning on the CFO on this. That is a bond that we would probably not be executing the entire piece on. Is that, would that be correct, Mr. Baldwin?
Mr. CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a technical piece, on the MSBA loan orders, the MSBA programs, Accelerated Repair Program, as well as the CORE program, operate on a pro-pay, pay-as-you-go basis. And so as we spend and pay the vendors, we submit through the pro-pay system for reimbursement of essentially 75 cents on the dollar. And so we only ever end up financing or issuing bonds for our 25%, 20%, depending on the effective reimbursement rate. It is possible, within the language of the loan order, to look to other funding sources, but we would just need to investigate because I don't believe that roofs would be an eligible ARP project. However, boilers could be something we could look at, but we'd have to talk to Mr. Flynn about that.
Okay, so about you thinking that $2.3 million could be used out of the ARP money disregarding the roof piece. But the roof piece could be included because of air and ventilation issues, right? No?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. That's something we'd have to investigate on. Currently, right now, we're looking at air only, not necessarily roofs. And I do understand, Counsel, what you're saying. But boilers, for instance, are not covered under ARP at this time. Now, I want to be clear. Sometimes the ARP rules seem to change back and forth. But at this point in time, it doesn't appear that boilers would be charged. I'd have to, we'd have to check on roofs. But at this time, Counselor, I would say no. But that's, we'll check that and find out.
It's a very interesting angle because of all the reports we're seeing. Because of the roofing, we're having breathing issues in areas, and it does cause breathing issues. So when you look at the ventilation piece that's in that ARP tied in, it may be something to ask that question and see if that can be done. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And, you know, this is all clearly work we have to do to keep the kids in a situation where they can actually learn when they're in school. I was sensitive to some of the things that Mr. Grossman brought up. And I would like to see us move in that direction as we go down the line here. One of the things he mentioned was geothermal. I know that the network geothermal project that National Grid is doing with the Rist Institute over at UMass Lowell is moving along. And I do know that kind of the catchment area for that project is very close to the Stocklosa School. I don't know if there's any plans for National Grid or if we've had that discussion about the potential of possibly tying in the Stocklosa School, you know, further down the line. It might be an opportunity to do something innovative here. And I think it's worth at least having that discussion with National Grid as we look on the longer time horizon.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, that has been discussed. We're very excited, actually bullish on what is going on. We're partnering with National Grid, as well as UMass and the Rist Institute. Most of the conversations have revolved around the neighborhood. And you are correct, it is right down the street. But this is an exciting time for this, if this is going to work. So that's something that we will, I'll bring it up with Ms. Moses to see if that has been something we could look at. But believe me, if this is something that will take off, I'm glad that the city of Lowell is in the forefront of it. It is very going to be an exciting time with our partnership, with our partners over at UMass and National Grid.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here and now, need a motion to the loan order to the public hearing, stated earlier by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counsel Yem, on favor of the I post in all the ice habit. Motion is carried. Also need a motion to accept the communication from the city manager to accept and place on file by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Mose here, on favor of the I post in all the ice habit. Motion is carried. The next items are the votes. I believe, skipping around a little bit, we are at the, are we at the vote, Mr. Clerk? The vote from the city manager. Need a motion to bundle?
If you could bundle.
Second.
One to 1.3 and 1.6 to 1.7.
Okay, so motion by Counselor Noon to bundle 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and what are the other items?
6.6 and 6.7.
6.6 and 6.7, the bundle motion, second by Counselor Janess. Okay. I couldn't tell the voice come out from the microphone. Forgive me, whoever screamed out. Let me just read the items, and we can talk about this individually if the body wishes. 6.1 is a vote to accept expend $75,000, $24 of the EOPSS grant for fire. 6.2, vote amend the Jem Plan, 20 Favor Street. 6.3, vote approve exemption of Evelyn Lally, MGLC 268A as 20. 6.6 is a vote to transfer $180,000 wastewater wages. 6.7 is a vote, transfer $608,000, $691 administrative employee wage. We'll talk. Please let us know which item that you want to make a comment on, a question on. Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like to recuse myself from voting on 6.7 because I have family members who work for the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, note that. Any other comment? Counselor Mose here?
Yes, thank you. I have a comment on 6.2 and a question on 6 point, whatever the other one was, 7, 6.7, I believe. On 6.2, when we're talking about 20 Favor Street, this building needs to become used in a positive way. And if changing the use of the property to residential use is going to make that derelicted property into something productive, then that's a good deal here. Something has to be done to that property. It's fallen in disrepair. We're going to be tearing it down pretty soon. It's as simple as that. It could be used for housing. So I'm in favor of changing the zoning on that. And this is, I don't know, what is this 6? This is the next one about adjusting the wage. Is it 6.7? I don't have it in front of me.
Is it 6.1, the administrative employee wage?
6.7.
Yep.
This is a list of people that were adjusting their salaries, their wages. Are there any more after this? Because I thought we were going to do everyone, and this seems to be a certain amount. Are we going to have another round of wage raising for other people? The reason I say that is because this is a very important issue. Now, people wonder, oh gee, I'm tired of our city employees to be paid less than surrounding communities. We train them here. They stay for a while. Then they're well-trained in their department. And the next thing you know, they're looking and they're going to Haverhill or Drakehead or Chevsford. And they're getting much more with a population that's far less than the city of Lowell. It's only fair that we have comparable wages. So take a department that has, let's say, DPW, and there's seven people in this particular department. And one left because of retirement, one is out on an 11F, let's say. Let's say another one realizes that they get more somewhere else. So there's four people doing the job of seven people. That's not fair. That's not fair. I am wholeheartedly in favor of paying the people a decent wage, comparable to surrounding communities. We have the biggest, largest population here, the greatest number of residents. We have the largest number of homelessness. And we have staff here that are doing a yeoman's job with, they're killing themselves. And I'm telling you, they are. I see this. And so this is very good to pay people what they're worth. And I'm for it. I'm for it. So I just wanted to make these comments on these two issues. Thank you.
Counsel Gitchio?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I'd like to recuse myself from 6.7 also.
Okay, thank. Mr. Clerk, note that as well. Counselor Yem and Counselor Gitchio will recuse themselves from 6.7, even though we can do a bundle vote on all of them, just those two now, two individuals.
It'll be duly noted, Mr. Mayor.
I would have to.
Counselor Mose here on 6.7 also. So we do a bundle vote, all the bundle items that will bundle. But these three individual counselors will recuse themselves specifically from 6.7. Mr. Manager, did you want to add something else to this?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, this is really an exciting time to talk about what we've talked about from the beginning is, and to answer the council's questions, and everyone's been talking about this. We are moving forward to get to every department, to look at what needs to be done, to value our employees. And I really believe that people are seeing this. We are, it's an exciting time. It's something that we have had the opportunity to do. This council has been very aggressive to make sure that we are getting into the possibility of staying very relevant and making sure that people are staying here to work for the city. We're valuing our employees. We're making sure that they're not getting the experience here and going elsewhere. And that's a big kudos to this council for making this happen. It's an opportunity that I think that everyone appreciates. I know that when I run into the employees, they're always consistently saying, you know, thank you to the council and thank you for making this happen. So once again, it's another step towards finishing that goal that we started. And I want to say thank you very much to all of you for making this happen and to tell the employees that, once again, still doing it in segments, that we have a few segments left, and it is coming. And we are doing our studies to find out where people are located, when you're challenged, looking at other towns, to make sure that we're paying just as well. So thank you to all the employees who have been patiently waiting. But I want you to know that it is something we're looking at. And thank you again, Counsel.
These votes have been approved to bundle. Now need a motion to vote on them by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Scott. Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mose here?
Yes, except 6.7. Thank you.
That'll be noted.
That happened noted for the.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchio?
Yes.
Eleven years.
We have a few taken out of orders. So the next item where we left off, we are at Section 8. Ordinance from the city manager. We already taken 8.1. Now we have to go to the report. Now we have to go to the report, section nine, are the reports, 9.1, the Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee of December 5th, 2023. The Chair President's Counselor Nguyen, do you have a report today, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic and Downtown Development Subcommittee met December 5th, 5:30, members, Counselor Scott, Counselor Janess, presence, also Counselor Eric Cheers and Counselor Mercier. From the administration, we have City Managers and Assistant City Managers, Joe Wani, by Rose. Joe Wani is by Rose, you know, provide an update on the ongoing development in the downtown and Hampton Canal District. Some of the development, economic development that have been ongoing in downtown has to do with some of those zone chains, the MBTA zoning overlay that clearly bring new constructions of rental unit and housings to the downtown area. The city has been using ARPA grants to fund more than a couple, more than two dozen, you know, storefront businesses, and a pop-up program that has happened recently that was ribbon-cutting a couple of weeks ago. The idea behind the pop-up, which, you know, everyone has been excited, that is the giving opportunity for the small businesses to have a temporary access to the storefront. So the storefront actually rotated every four months, and hoping that some of those businesses that got to utilize the temporary for the storefront successfully enough that they transitioned to the temporary. I know that DPD, particularly Ali Carter's been working aggressively, working with all those individuals that is a members of those temporaries, and soon to be, hopefully, permanent business owners for the downtown. The city also recently has been, you know, the council actually passed the ordinance pertaining to downtown, what we, to do to help the property owners on upper floor to renovate it and, and whatnot, particularly to, now second to the Hampton Canal Innovative District. At the beginning, we have 18 parcel. Most of those has been complete and successfully, of course, the courthouse is one of which we have parcel six and seven, Appleton Mill, complete as well, back in 2011. Parcel 10, we have, that is University 110 Canal. Parcel eight and nine, wind development apartment building, just recently complete as well. Parcel 14, that is a city, the Hampton Canal Innovative Garage. Now parcel 11, 1 to 5, Salapoli Company. Parcel 1, the garage in front of the courthouse, soon to be completed, soon to be in operation, maybe in a month or so from now. The concern that some of us have, you know, a question regarding parcel two, three, four, and five, we, we learned from assistant managers, Joe Wani by Rose, that they've been working, you know, actively with, or in communication with Salapoli Company. The company had been asking for some change, some amendment to the land development agreement, LDA. So any change to that need to have an approval of the council. And I know that we learned as well that, that the assistant city managers, Joe Wani by Rose's, will provide a presentation to the city council, hopefully by February of next year. And from there, the council will vote to amend or not the modification for the, to the LDA. Concern raised around the timeline of that, we want to know also, the request to have a timeline of that, the, the work with Salapoli on the modification. We also want to question concerning the parcel 15, that is the, the remaining parcel with regard to the dirt, the amount of dirt or debris, what would you call it, on parcel 15, and when that's going to be removed. We were told that that should be removed sometime in the spring or so. The city got grant from the state to assess and to work on those lot 15 and 16. Now, back to the parcel 11 and 12. A DPD working actively with the developer for mixed-use residential building with outdoor dining. The remaining parcel right now is four more remaining parcel, parcels 13, 15, 16, and 17. And I know that the manager has been working with, and the manager and the assistant city manager has been working with, you know, developers, the, the use of that will be housing and commercial. Those is, those are the report, Mr. Mayor, and I would invite my committee members, Counselor Scott and Counselor Janess, if they have any comment to add.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other comments or questions to add? Hearing none. Need a motion to accept report, as a report of progress by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Janess, on favor of I oppose, say no, the ice habit. Motion is carry. For the next items are the, regarding the one inspection, need 9.2, 9.3, 9.4, need a motion to bundle by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Yam. 9.2 is wire inspection, Boston Gas, DBA, National Grid, request installation of 280-foot, 4-inch plastic main on Canal Street from Jackson Street to Middlesex Street. 9.3, wire inspection, National Grid, request installation of underground electric conduit on Moore Street to improve service to Lowell Housing Authority. 9.4, wire inspection, National Grid, request installation of underground electric conduit on Down Street to improve service to Lowell Housing Authority. Any comments or questions on any of this?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Nguyen?
Send it to the public, the, the public meeting.
That's, would be, this will adopt to the accompanying order. Okay, Counselor Leahy, do you have a comment or question on this?
Yes, through you to the manager. Did we decide if things were urgent to get like the gas over to the, to the parking garage and then the electric with the housing?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel, the gas is, and the two electrical can't hold. I spoke with Mass, National Grid on both of them, and of course Lowell, our, our partners over at the Lowell Housing Authority are more than happy, whatever National Grid feels. But National Grid does want to be at the ready in the event that they need to do something. But I heard from Mr. Davis, Curtis Davis, that spoke to the folks in the electrical and the gas side. So one is a go, and the other two are a hold unless they really need them. The electrical folks were more than, more than happy. At this time, they want to put it into their queue to make it happen for the beginning of April, unless things change.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to the manager and his team. I heard from Mr. Gignac over at the Charter School, and he did have some conversations with National Grid, so thank you for helping make that connection.
Any other comments on this? Hearing none. Need a motion to accept and adopt the accompanying order by Counselor Nguyen, second by Counselor Yam, on favor of I oppose, say no, the ice habit. Motion is carry. The next item is petitions. 10.1, claim one property damage. Any comment or question on this item? Hearing none. Need a motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Gutierrez, on favor of I oppose, say no, the ice habit. Motion is carry. The next item is 10.2. This is a miscellaneous. Ms. Brooke Fergat request permission to address the city council regarding migrant issues. Mr. Clerk, is the petition here?
I believe. Petition of Brooke Fergat? No?
Ms. Fergat, walk on the chamber, please. State your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Brooke Fergat. I live at 35 Burnier Street, apartment 13. And thank you to everybody who is doing a great job serving our city, especially the EPA, and wanted to thank them for their very detailed and informative report. There are a couple of things that I have concerns about in bringing as a, that I wanted to bring up in regards to our eagerness to take on more humanitarian work, we'll call it. I think the way in which we treat our homeless should be reflective on, maybe we should consider some, some alternative measures, like maybe the state is currently having the National Guard take over the immigrant issues. From, as a resident, in my personal experience, some concerns that I have in relation to having Lowell Police Department especially oversee the safety of more people in our city. I guess I'll start off with, I have been wrongfully sectioned three times by our Lowell Police Department since September. Zero diagnoses in regards to mental health since then. I really believe that they should be investigated, along with Saints Memorial Hospital, for issues that I really can't speak of right now, but maybe in the future they will, they will arise.
Correct.
And Lowell Police Department will be overseeing the safety of those migrants, so I thought that it should be noted for the record. The sidewalks in our city are a disgrace. We saw that earlier, for them to have any sort of, for anybody to be able to get around, as well as the bus. I waited three hours the other day in front of the Gulf Street, in front of the Gulf on Woburn Street for a bus, in which it didn't actually stop when it, when it came by. The potholes in the pavement make it really difficult to walk around, as well as the sidewalks are very misleading. The cemeteries are a shame, how we treat our veterans if we're going to treat any new, any new residents. I'm, I'm speaking of the safety of migrants, thank you. And our fire department, I'm not sure if they were aware of the issues with the power lines. And I'm just going to end with our, I think it's, it's, we live in a very, we're positioned to be a very, very prosperous city. We are in, in a metropolis. We have plenty of natural resources, and I think that if we were to utilize our resources a little bit better, we could take care of our residents, much less take in others. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fergat. Now we need a motion to refer to City Manager for report and recommendation, or any counselors, any motion. We hear no, no motion. We, I have to ask from you, Counselor, I don't know what time it is right now, but it seems pretty, we have a lot of time this evening left. Any other, before we adjourn, any announcements? Counselor Leahy?
Just one request. We should invite, it's tradition that we invite the newly-elected Counselor to join us at the next meeting.
It's a great idea, Counselor, if Mr. Manager could invite the Counselor-elect to be at the next meeting, that'd be great. Any other announcements? Counselor Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering when Counselor Leahy is going to wear that preposterous, far-fetched sweater, but he keeps putting it off. He made a commitment, I think he should honor it. Thank you.
Better than ties running tonight, Counselor Mercier.
Any other announcement by any of the Counselor? Hearing none, Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, I just want to say thank you very much for all the support last Thursday. A very successful event down at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. Culinary celebration, what we had, I believe it was 19 restaurants, 19 restaurants, over 600 people, and a lot of fun. So, and thank you all very much for being there. We really got the word out, and it was a lot of fun. So, and today, obviously, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for hosting the, the holiday extravaganza here at the, at City Hall. It was a lot of fun. Santa Claus was here and asking for all of you. And last but not least, this week, for all the, all the members, last, this is the last week for yard waste. So if we could put that out there, I know that we're going to be singing out on our Facebook pages and our social media, but this is the last week for yard waste. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Just one last announcement. This Thursday is Organ Day. We have Organ Day event this Thursday at 10:30 a.m. on the steps of City Hall. The public is invited, everyone is invited. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for watching from home. Need a motion to adjourn by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Rook, on favor of I oppose, say no, the ice habit. Motion is carry. Have a wonderful night.